Good evening, welcome to the October 24th session of the Bellingham City Council. Bellingham City Council meets all requirements of the State of Washington Open Meetings Act on Monday, November 7th, 2016 at 7:00 PM in council chambers. The city council will host a public hearing on the consideration of the proposed Comprehensive Plan Amendments with regard to three applications submitted for docketing consideration. If you could all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna start with our public hearing this evening. Oh, roll call. Follow the list. April Barker.
Here.
Dan Hamill.
Here.
Jean Knutson.
Here.
Michael Lelequest.
Here.
Roxanne Murphy.
Here.
Pinky Vargas.
Here.
Terry Bornham.
Here.
Nobody signed up on our list. Okay, well, we're gonna start with the public hearing. As part of the 2017-18 biennial budget process, city council needs to establish the property tax levy for the upcoming year. In preparation for that decision, the estimated revenues for the biennium will be discussed and the impact of the increase in the property's tax levy amount. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Brian Henshaw, our Finance Director. Hi, Brian.
Hi, I thought I was gonna have time first. Okay, thank you very much, Brian Henshaw, Finance Department. As Pinky mentioned, tonight, we're gonna have opportunity for a public comment on the 2017-2018 revenue forecast. I'll go through the general fund first and then talk a little bit about the property tax levy, enterprise funds, some of the highlights of just the four major enterprise funds, and then the budget schedule for the rest of the year. Please stop and ask questions as I go if you have any. I'll also just point out to the general public that the September financials are online, as well as this presentation, as well as the entire budget. And you can go to cob.org/finance/reports and download that information. So we'll start with the general fund. General fund is forecasted to end of the year at about $73.5 million. This will be a slight increase over the 2015 revenue of about 1.8%. We are slightly ahead on some of the revenue forecasts for sales tax and business and occupation tax. We're forecasting revenues next year of $77 million. That's about 3.9% increase over where I forecast 2016 to end up, or $3.5 million. I will point out that the two largest increases in the 2017 budget over the 2016 budget are attributable to two events. One is a new contract for services with Fire District 8, which is about $1.4 million of that increase. And then we're also anticipating and budgeting for a $500,000 transfer from a fund to the general fund to help pay for the financial software project that we are budgeting for next year. About 81% of our general fund revenue comes from four main revenue sources: property tax, sales tax, business and occupation tax, and utility tax. The other miscellaneous is from fees and penalties, interest, or charges for goods and services. Year-to-date, sales tax revenue is up about 4% over 2015. All categories are increasing except for general merchandise. General merchandise is our largest contributor to general fund sales tax revenue. It's about 15% of the total. It's down 9% year-over-year from last year. This is the third year in a row that general merchandise has declined, largely due to the Canadian dollar and Canadian shoppers, but also online shopping. Online shopping is changing where sales tax is derived and received, and certainly impacting retail sales in Bellingham. Next year, it's anticipated that sales tax revenue would be about $13.5 million for the general fund. That's about 18% of the total of the general fund revenues. You can see that I'm projecting a... we're up about 4% year-to-date for nine months. I'm anticipating a slight decline. It's gone down slightly since the beginning of the year, also because of permit activity and construction activity. I'm forecasting this to taper off slowly to the end of the year and to forecast out the next two years at about 30% growth rate. The next one is business and occupation tax. This generates about $15.3 million for the general fund. You'll recall last year that council passed a healthcare provider tax on the healthcare providers within Bellingham. This attributes for the large 17% increase in the BNO tax. Year-to-date, we're about 6.8% for the first nine months. However, we started out the year at about 14%, and each month, that's gone down slowly. So again, I'm forecasting out to the end of the last three months of the year, we'll end the year at about 4%, and then taper off even a little bit more. Again, it's a lot of construction activity that's tapering off, and BNO tax is generated on that as well. Any questions so far?
Yeah, I just wanna clarify, the tax for goods that are sold online, do those tax revenues go back to the originating county where the product was purchased?
Yeah, it depends on if there's... how it's delivered and where it's delivered, and then also where it's taken. So, large-ticket items such as cars are at the dealership regardless of where you pick it up, airplanes, boats, same thing. But where a big change has happened at Blaine, Blaine is now... gets more of their sales tax from online sales, and they have mailboxes, so they have Canadian shoppers that come across the border, pick up in Blaine, and go. So Blaine now has that, captures that sales tax revenue. So it depends on where it's being shipped from and to, so it's changing. But a lot more people are just buying stuff online, and that's harder for us to track, The next revenue source is utility taxes. Utility taxes are collected from utility companies that operate within the city limits, including the city-operated water, sewer, and storm utilities. We also collect revenue on electric... electricity, gas, telephone, and cable. Some of these are dependent upon the weather. Obviously, when we have mild weathers, gas and electricity rates or usage goes down, so that would generate less utility tax. The biggest two revenue sources for the city are on the water fund and on electricity. And you can see we generate $4.4 million on water and about $3.6 on electricity. Combined, this will generate about $16 million for the general fund. That's about 20% of the general fund sales tax revenue, or, sorry, tax total revenue. Year-to-date, we are trending at about 1.8%. Again, attributable to the mild winters, also low rates for gas. A couple of utilities are now asking for rate increases at the state. They're regulated by the state, so anticipating also slight increases in the next two years on utility taxes. Property tax generates about $19.7 million for the city. $14.7 of it goes to the general fund. $2.1 million of it goes to the fire and police pension, and $3 million a year is generated for the low-income housing levy. The difference here, obviously, is for Greenways. Currently, none of the budget anticipates any of the levy revenue. We're gonna wait till November and see what happens at the ballot, and then we would make amendments to the budget depending on the ballot outcomes. The long-term average for property tax is approximately 1.5%. This accounts for the 1% that you can statutorily levy each year, plus annexations, new buildings, growth, reassessed valuations for any of the utilities, and also private... or taking public land and maybe making it private or vice versa. So that's kind of the long-term average that I've built into the budget so far. Since we don't have the actual numbers for the 2017 budget, I put up the 2016 property tax distributions to represent what is likely the proration of that. You'll see that Bellingham School Districts is the largest, about 40.3% of the total property tax levy goes to the schools. Another 21% goes to the State General Fund. Then is the City of Bellingham, is about 24%, and the county has another about 12% when you add all these together. Of that amount that goes to the city, the general fund is about 14.3% of the total. Greenways is currently about 4.7%. And fire and police pension is to pay for the long-term care pension and also the medical expense for the left one, police and fire officers that worked with or currently with the city up into 1977. They had to be employed by the city at that time. And the housing levy is $3 million a year for seven years, and this goes through 2019. On a per-levy dollar per thousand of assessed valuation, this is the current 2016 assessed levy rates. You see, the largest portion of it is general fund. Greenways is just over 51 cents currently. Affordable housing is 32 cents. So the total right now at the city is $2.63 per thousand. And it's important to remember that the levy rate is only a mathematical calculation, so the actual dollars is what we would increase. So, the current amount that we would have in the 2016 levy is $19.7 million. A 1% increase is about $197,000, obviously, it's rounded. So the next 2017 estimated levy amount is $19.9 million. And then I take the estimate of the assessed valuation, and you divide that. We had $9.3 billion of assessed valuation in Bellingham last year. That's gonna go up for new construction, any other changes to that. And you divide that 19 by the 9 billion, and that's how you come up with the levy rates per thousand. So it's not that... if your assessed valuation goes up, it doesn't mean that your taxes are gonna go up, and that's what's important to remember. So, on the median home in Bellingham, which was in the Bellingham Herald in October, it's $370,000 now. That's about $780 of your total tax bill is for the City of Bellingham. Okay? Now, this does not include, again, anything on the ballot in November, so this is just what is remaining: general fund, pension, and the home levy, just so everybody's clear on that. How much you pay is in proportion to if your assessed valuation goes up more or less than the general population. That's the only way your taxes will go up or down relative to everybody else. So this is about the same amount that you would have last year minus the Greenways levy. Does that make sense? Okay? Property tax levies are interesting, and so I'll take more time if anyone needs more time to go through them. Okay, so that's it for the general fund. The general fund, the biennial budgeted revenues for the next two years is $155 million. All other funds in the city is another $372 million. So the general fund is about 30% of the total revenue that we anticipate to get. The rest of them are restricted by either council policy or state law and how the money can be spent. So it's important to remember the general fund is about 30% of the total. Another fund that we track is real estate excise tax. This is from the sale of real estate within the city limits. It's a good revenue source that can be used for capital construction and capital maintenance projects citywide. It's very dependent upon the housing and real estate market. We've had a very strong growth the last two years. It's slowing slightly in 2016, but the housing market remains strong. So the main difference that I see right now, year-to-date, after the nine months, is that we've had fewer large commercial projects that have sold in 2016 as compared to 2015. So that's kind of the difference. So the housing market is still strong, it's just the commercial buildings that are slowing down. And I just anticipate that this will continue to be a little bit slower. Interest rates are slowly edging up, and so I'm anticipating or forecasting the next two years it'll go down to about $3 million in real estate excise tax each of the next two years. We do have two more years of civic field improvement bonds that are paid for out of the REIT fund, and that's $650,000. So off the top, out of the $3 million that we use it for debt service. Next, I'll talk about the enterprise funds, the street fund. 2017 anticipated revenue is about $17.3 million. Two big changes happened in 2015. The first one is we created the Public Work Administrative and Engineering Fund. This is an internal service fund, so we took all of those expenses out of the street fund to account for them separately. Those people that are working, the public works admin and engineering department are then direct billed to any of the projects and any of the other funds and/or projects, and we allocate like Ted's time and Eric's time to all of the public works funds. So that's why you see a big decrease here in revenues, because we now account for that in a separate fund. And the other one here is the loan that we took out from the State of Washington, the local program, to pay for the LED light project. That was $3.5 million to pay for that light retrofit and improvement project that we'll pay back over the next 12 years. The other largest revenue source for a street fund, sorry, is general... is sales tax revenue, and then they also get the field tax, which is about $1.6 million. Water fund revenues are about $25 million. Again, in 2015, we had a couple... we took out, let's see, a loan here to pay back the line of credit that we were using for watershed purchases. And then you see waterfront rates, the metered... water rates continue to increase as we do the meter conversion projects, and the unmetered rates continue to decline. This is scheduled to end early next year. We'll have completed all 16,000 meter conversions next year. Year-to-date, through September, we've got $900,000 of demand charges. That's this color up here. That's about 12% higher than last year. So again, a lot of development, housing being built. Those people hook into the system and pay development charges. Wastewater fund, about $21.4 million of anticipated revenue in 2017. In 2013, you'll see that we took out about $16 million worth of bonds. This was the second bond issuance to pay for the wastewater treatment plant. The total project on that was just about $55 million. That is now done. Again, you can see the change from unmetered wastewater to metered wastewater, the conversions in the revenue sources. And we also had a large contribution from Lake Wacom Water and Sewer District this year of $2.4 million. Originally, they were gonna pay that back over a 10-year time period, but they decided that they wanted to finance that themselves and pay us in a lump sum, so we received $2.4 million. And that's their contribution for a portion of the infrastructure, including the wastewater treatment plant expansion and some of the pipes that get their product down to our treatment plant. All right, the last one we'll talk about is stormwater fund revenues. Stormwater fund... sorry, we got two more. Stormwater is about $10 million a year. Most of this revenue is collected from property owners for impervious surface. We also have been using loans and grants from the state to pay for some of the large water quality and retrofit projects. Squalicum Creek is one of those. We also used, let's see, contributions from some of the other funds that... both internal funds from the city, but also some of the other property owners in the north for the regional stormwater facility. That was a contribution... sorry, my cursor's lost here. About $1.6 million in contributions to build that regional stormwater facility. And then in 2017 and 2018, we are now budgeting as a transfer from the watershed, 30% of the watershed fee. Council has acknowledged where the new policy is to spend that in the watershed for water quality improvement projects, so those will be stormwater projects that will be partially paid for by some of the watershed fees. So that's another million dollars in each of these years. They're gonna be transferred into this fund, and this is where the projects will be managed and maintained in the stormwater fund. Okay, now the last one. Solid Waste Fund is utility tax based on solid waste collection, sanitary service. You'll see that we're anticipating large amounts of remediation. This would be MACHA funds from the state in 2017 and 2018. This money is almost all going now towards remediation projects down on the waterfront and also on Eldridge Avenue where the old landfills were to clean them up. We had an interfund loan here that was paid back, so this money was loaned to the watershed to pay back the line of credit for land acquisition projects, so $1,250,000, I believe, was paid back in 2016. So that interfund loan is all paid in full now. But all of this money now is being used to fund the current ongoing studies of those remediation projects, and hopefully then in 2017 and 18, we'll start the actual project. So we're anticipating more state funding for those. Any questions on that? All right, so...
Sorry, just one question on MACHA funding. Past the $17 and $18, beyond that, what is the need for those dollars?
The need has not been fully defined yet, and that's a... because it's still in the evaluation stages, and then it's gonna come back to council and also the public for public comment on the preferred alternatives. So each of the three big ones are approximately $16 million each, and so this would only be a start on one of those at $4 million. So we have a need of about $32 million, I think, for all of the projects. We anticipate $16 million coming from the state MACHA funds, so that leaves about $16 million that we will need to determine the priority and the funding for those when we get close to a project. And that's the difficulty, is the projects just keep... DOE continues to evaluate alternatives, and as we do that, there's more alternatives, the costs go up for the evaluations and the studies. So Amy and Tara would be better, and they'll update council when we have more definitive timing on those projects, but it's a big number.
I think that just underscores the importance of our discussion this afternoon about legislative priorities and what we're asking for. MACHA dollars are a big part of that.
Yeah. Any other questions? So, because of the holiday, it's a little bit of a compressed schedule, so I wanted to put this up and get your comments on that. Tonight is the public hearing on the revenue forecast. I would suggest that we leave it open all the way until the November 7th, and we can take written comment, and they can direct that directly to council and/or to myself, and we'll present all of that to you. On the 7th, we will have another work session in the afternoon and introduce the property tax ordinance for first and second reading. The property tax ordinance needs to be adopted before the end of November, and I need to submit that over to the county assessor, so that's kind of what we're doing. And then the holiday is after the 14th weekend of... or the week of the 20th, I believe. There is another opportunity, if you wanted to have another council meeting in November, it's November 28th, I believe, for a special meeting to talk about the budget or work session. It's up to you. I throw it out there now. But otherwise, the... we have two meetings, and they're both early in December, the 5th and the 12th, and we would be having a public hearing on November 4th for the budget, the preliminary budget, and any changes that are gonna be made to it. And we could, again, keep written comment open until December 5th and then have the first and second budget ordinance. I'm just trying to give you an opportunity to hear comment before you have to vote on anything. And then, right now, the last meeting of the year is December 12th, so that's when we need to adopt the budget.
Council members, any questions?
So, when in this timeline are we gonna hear Public Works? Because we'll do that on the 7th during a work session?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? No? Okay. Anything else, Brian?
That's it. That's my email address, if anyone would like to send written comment directly to me and/or to council, and we'll bring that forward and make sure everybody has it.
Okay. We didn't have anybody signed up on the list when we started. Is there anybody who wishes to speak for the public hearing on our revenue forecast? It's applicable to this?
Yes.
Okay. Please state your name if you could.
Yeah, hi, my name is Chris Diley, and I just noticed in watching the presentation that the... what was most significant to me, you know, being a homeless person, is that the Greenways is practically twice the amount of affordable housing. And I just wanted to point that out. I think... I'm just glad that Jay Inslee, Governor Jay Inslee, says that he's gonna make it a priority to build more affordable housing, and I really think that's an answer. So I'd like to see those numbers reversed, personally. So I just wanted to point that out. And one other thing is that maybe if you could find it in the budget to provide porta-potties, say like over at Fred Meyer's, for not just homeless people, for drunken college students and... because the bathrooms are closed at Hagan's and various places. They close them early, like at 9 o'clock at night, and there's nowhere for people to go. But if you have porta-potties, it's, I think, is a practical solution to the problem of public urination. So I just wanted to throw that out there, and... thanks.
Thank you, Chris. Brian, did you wanna address the fact that there are tax levies for Greenways and home improvement? Does it matter? Okay. Anyone else? Any... anyone else for public comment? Going once? Going twice? Going three times? Okay, so, written comment is still open until November 7th, so if there is anybody who has comments they wish to include on that, please submit them by November 7th. And we are going to move into the public comment period of our evening.
Good evening, I'm Ann Mackey, I live in the York neighborhood. I want to acknowledge to council that at your meeting last week, October 17th, I was the person in the audience who raised the objection to proceeding with the paid consultant speaker from the Building Industry and Realtor Association and Property Rights Group, who was given a special 15-minute time allotment. I'm the person that said objection. It's like a point of order. Had there been a public comment periods scheduled prior to the opening of that public hearing, I could have waited and raised an objection then, but no public comment was scheduled. So I felt there was no alternative but to object from the floor. I have been a very active participant at these meetings for years and am fully aware of the rule that people cannot give away their three-minute time to someone else. It just doesn't work well, could be misused. Another approach might have been for you, the council, to discuss among yourselves at the beginning of the meeting about that agenda change. And I know some of you were surprised that it was happening, and perhaps you could have asked if the five people that this person was representing were actually present in the room. I don't believe they all were. So I remind you that two of us, two citizens, had spoken August 8th, and we were very curtly yelled at by the chair, and because we had exceeded our three minutes by... yelled at by the chair and because we had exceeded our three minutes by a few seconds and one person was actually physically menaced. That's really when things began to deteriorate in our relationships. And two wrongs don't make a right and I think we want to move forward. The York neighborhood had a really wonderful meeting on the, a community-wide meeting of about 140 people in mid-September where it went on for several hours and lots of people came to the microphone and spoke and it was really a great, meaningful exchange of ideas. And not everyone agreed. In fact, the BIAW representative spoke at length and spoke more than once. So we welcome the exchange of ideas. I want to move on to your decision this afternoon on Policy H8 in the Comprehensive Plan, which five of you voted to retain in the plan and two of you, Jean Knutson and Terry Borneman, voted against it. And thank you, I believe your vote was in support of neighborhood priorities. I think this H18 has really come to be a symbolic item in the Comprehensive Plan. It symbolizes neighborhoods feeling of having objections to special interest groups gaining an unfair advantage in developing the housing policies of this city. It was a mysterious, a mysterious group that had been organized, no one knew about the meetings, we've never seen the notes or the minutes, and I think today you were given the membership list. I've yet to see any of that. And so it's become symbolic and it's unfortunate that that item was left in the comp plan. But thank you.
Lynn Barton, and if I'm pronouncing that incorrectly, please do correct me. And then Chris Steele.
You have that right, thank you. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Lynn Barton, I live in the Birchwood neighborhood, been there 11 years and in Bellingham for 24. So, single-family zones deserve saving. Not to do so is actually reverse discrimination. What troubles me most is the inability of the planning department to manage and monitor the codes already on the books. So implementation of items such as Policy H18 is a potential farce. Most ADUs in the city are illegal and prevalent. And then there's the duplicity in attempts to resolve issues such as licensing the wolves to watch the hen house, as in the rental registration violation reports by private parties. About Policy H18, draft comp plan housing section, my faith that this will become, my faith is that this will become as mucked up as the other planning strategies in past. I have less faith than two years ago. It's been lost by development greed and government malfeasance in a misguided sense of future overbuilding of our current single-family zones, making residential overfill fair for everyone. Not to save our historic single-family zones is reverse discrimination against single-family intended homeowners who've invested in these neighborhoods. My other point too is on Policy H18, there is the comment of small lots. What is a small lot? Are you suggesting that we're going to be subdividing our single-family zones into small lots? I have a concern about that. So I'm going to take the rest of my minute to just state and have everyone reflect on this point. Single-family zones deserve saving. Not to do so is reverse discrimination and I'm taking my next 45 minutes for all of us to think about that. That means I have 20 seconds left for all of you to please think about this. I want to thank you for your time. I have a lot of respect for you. I know this is a very difficult job. I have to ask you to please do better though. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Chris?
Hi, Chris Diley, homeless here in Bellingham. I wanted to thank the people that donated coats to the homeless. I got this coat over at the church and I really appreciate it. It's one of the best coats I've ever owned. So thank you very, very much for that. Just back on the porta-potty issue, I had a really stressful incident here at Sheraton, parking lot by Fred Meyers. It's a huge lot, not just guest park there, but university students, professionals, Fred Meyers employees, they all park in that area that's close to Lakeway. I was parking there in my van for about two months, sleeping in my van and I would leave during the day, so I wasn't leaving my van there like 24/7. But once in a blue moon, being a human being, I may have to urinate like at 2:00 in the morning, which I happen to need to do. So there was, there was a, just to be very brief, they, one of their employees came around in their van and put their lights on me as I was walking out to the, I went out to the wall out by Lakeway and, you know, I had the bright lights right on my head as I was peeking over the wall, you know, practically catching me in the act. They kicked me off the property for that. They said, you know, we can't have that. And he was all indignant, you know, about homeless people urinating and defecating and et cetera, et cetera. And I'm like, you know, when I was in San Luis Obispo, California, 10 years ago when I was homeless, I was sleeping in a tent behind, beside a dumpster by the football field on Cal Poly University. I had a, I was woken up by a college student, a young girl, urinating right by my tent. She came right beside it. I was woken up, I thought the sprinklers were going off, she was peeing so hard. And I looked outside my tent, I almost yelled at her, but I didn't want to startle her. But, you know, I'm like, hey, that's what the college students do. But when they do it, it's a form of merriment because they're college students and everybody doesn't judge them. But when a homeless person does, everybody gets indignant. They're like, how disgusting, you know, that homeless people do this. Well, of course it's disgusting. We need to have somewhere to live so we don't have to do it in public. Or Hagan's needs to stop locking their bathroom doors at 9:00 PM at night because they're open all night. Why don't you keep the bathrooms open? So why actually cause this situation to occur to where you have people that have nowhere to go? And my last point is that when I was in Lake Havasu, Arizona, they forced me out of the city. I was trying to live in my van, they complained, the police came, they said, no, you can't sleep in your van in the city limits. They forced me out to the BLM lands 10 miles away and you go out on the BLM lands, they have no porta-potties, they don't have anything. So that's where they put the homeless out there and you're out in the desert, out in the middle of nowhere, no porta, nothing. So what are you supposed to do? So don't, please, don't judge the homeless for this and don't be putting this at the top of the list for removing us from society. You know, just take care of the problem and think of us in a more considerate and compassionately. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak for public comment this evening? Come on down, Louise.
I was at the meeting this afternoon and I do appreciate all your work. I'm Louise Bjornson, I live in the Birchwood neighborhood. I'd like to thank Jean and Terry this afternoon for standing up for open government. I'd like to thank you for voting to take out H18 from the comp plan. H18 was written by an unknown group at an unknown time, in an unknown place, and refers to an unknown information. It was a closed meeting, the public was not informed, was not involved, and was not invited to the meeting. The council doesn't know the details about H18. The citizens don't know about H18. H18 is not appropriate to be in the comprehensive plan. Let's have more open government, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise. Anyone else for public comment? No? Going once? Going twice? Okay, I'm going to close public comment period for this evening. We're going to move to the updates for our committee meetings. Our first meeting is Public Works Public Safety and Terry Borneman is the chair.
Thank you, Pinky. We had three items before the committee today. The first was a bid award for EW0230, 2016 Water Main Replacement Program, bid number The 2016 Water Main Replacement Program involves replacement of approximately 4,400 linear feet of water main piping on West Holly Street and East Street. The city received nine bids which were publicly opened on September 29th, 2016. Ram Construction General Contractors was the responsible bidder who submitted the lowest responsive bid of $1,877,297.56, including any applicable Washington State sales or use tax. The engineer's estimate was $2,347,340.63. The committee recommended awarding the bid to Ram Construction and I so move.
Second. You have a motion in front of us, any discussion? Okay, so motion is to accept the bid. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0.
The second item was a post-point treatment plant bio solids project update. Staff partnered with Brown and Caldwell Consulting to examine technologies to upgrade the city's management of bio solids while working with the framework of the city's legacy statements and strategic commitments. Project deliverables include examinations of mitigating away from our current incineration process, studying the fiscal impacts of new methods of bio solids management, a strong public outreach component, and reviewing the possibility of development of a natural resources, education, and outreach center. The upgrades to the bio solids management is a multi-phase project to develop a new methods of handling bio solids while supporting the core values of the citizens of Bellingham. Staff provided a brief presentation. We had a pretty good discussion around this item this afternoon. It was for information only. And our last item was an ordinance of the City of Bellingham, Washington, amending various sections of the Bellingham Municipal Code in order to adopt by reference several criminal codes of the Revised Code of Washington. The City of Bellingham prosecutes under its own laws and within its own municipal court all misdemeanors and gross misdemeanor offenses occurring within the City of Bellingham. In order to prosecute state laws found in the Revised Code of Washington, the city must first adopt the specific state code by reference into city's municipal code. The attached ordinance is for the council's consideration in the interest of public health, safety, and welfare, the specific provisions related to disclosing intimate images, surrender of weapons, and failure to register as a sex offender. Today was for information only. The ordinance will come back at our next meeting for discussing, discussion and hopefully passage. End of committee meeting. Minutes.
Thank you, Terry. Our next meeting is Lake Wacom Policy and Dan Hamon is the chair.
Thank you. We had one item before us this afternoon, it was for information only. This was an overview of the Lake Wacom Policy Group meeting on October 17th. And during that meeting, we had two items. The first one was an overview of proposed Wacom County vacation rental regulations. Wacom County is in the process of considering changes to its regulations of bed and breakfasts and vacation rentals. One vacation rental will be allowed per lot. Vacation rentals will be required to register with the county and two code violations within 12 months will result in revocation of the registration. Owners will self-certify that their property meets health and safety standards. In the Lake Wacom watershed, establishing a vacation rental or a bed and breakfast would require a conditional use permit, which includes a determination by the hearing examiner that all requirements have been met. Establishing a rental will require a report on the condition of the septic system at the time of application and again in three years for gravity systems and annually for other systems. Owners will also be required to post a notice in the unit regarding the aquatic invasive species threat to the lake and associated requirements for watercraft. I just want to stress that that is, that's, Wacom County is instituting those regulations and rules. That's not a City of Bellingham program, but because that Lake Wacom Policy Group does, is multi-jurisdictional, I did want to report out on that. The second item that we had was another county item and this is the, well, county and city combined item, homeowner incentive program update. City and the county are working together to implement changes to the homeowner incentive program. The county is developing an agreement with Wacom Conservation District to fulfill this function. The agreement will go before the district and the county council by mid-November. Assurances for long-term maintenance of hip projects are being developed and are under legal review by city and county staff. The agreement will allow city or county staff to enter a property after property, proper notice to make sure that the established practice or treatment facility is still in place and that any needed maintenance has occurred. County is expecting to contribute up to $100,000 to the hip program in 2017. That's a significant increase over previous years. The next meeting for the Lake Wacom Policy Group is November 21st, 2016, 3:00 PM, the fireplace room, 625 Hallock. That's open to the public and we do encourage folks to attend. End of committee report.
Thank you, Dan. We're going to move to committee of the whole. We had six items in front of us today. The first one was a presentation on the programs at the Northwest Youth Services by Executive Director Rianna Bardesley. I'm just going to highlight a couple of things that she mentioned this afternoon. They do take care of two different age populations at the youth services and from ages 12 to 17, they help about 65 to 70 people a year and so far not have, have not had to turn away a minor. They also help ages 18 to 34 and they are exceeding about 350 applications.
24.
Oh, 24, thank you. Little writing too fast, thank you. 18 to 24 is a lot more youth-oriented, okay? So they are exceeding 350 applications per year for housing and currently they have a waitlist of about 130 people for housing, so. Another thing that she mentioned to us, which was quite significant, is that 40% of their youth population identifies themselves as LGBTQT and they have a much more difficult time finding housing and just that that is a very significant number at 40% that are not in homes. Another thing she mentioned, she just gave us a little update on 22 North, which is the housing unit being built and there will be 20 beds for youth and 20 for adults and then again, that's 18 to 24, not 34. And she also mentioned that there are a lot of community organizations that are coming together to provide housing and did want to send that appreciation and thanks to all the, besides the city, all the different organizations that are really pulling out everything they can to find housing for as many people as we possibly can. So that was our update from Rianna. Is there anything that I missed that anyone wanted to add?
Yeah, if you don't mind, Pinky, thanks. I just want to add, we had a comment earlier today from someone who said we should do more about housing. I don't think any of us disagree with that. This is just one of the examples. We use money from our own general fund, we use some federal dollars passed to us to support Northwest Youth Services. We're using $2 million of our local housing levy funds plus federal dollars for their housing programs for youth. We have other housing programs for other people. It may not be enough, but I just, I just want people to see we're trying, that's all. So I decided to bring it up right now because of that comment earlier in the evening.
That's, thank you, that was very valuable information. I appreciate you bringing that up. The next item was the discussion of our 2017 legislative agenda. We agreed today to accept the proposals for the joint and city legislative agenda. We did have one additional request and a motion was made to recommend approval to the COGS transportation priorities as part of our city's legislative agenda. That was unanimously recommended and I so move. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Our next item was the Waterfront District Implementation Status Report. We had a great presentation by Tara Sundin and Gina Austin and I would recommend that people, you might want to take a look at this afternoon's committee meeting to see all of that. There were some really great visuals for people to see exactly where we're going, what some of the upcoming plans are. Harcourt was actually here, the developer was here last month. They met with the port, which was, they had a very well-attended port meeting, discussing certain things that are on there. But I, I'm just going to ask you to refer, if you could, to the committee meeting because it had all the presentations with all the visuals, and without those visuals, it's probably not a great explanation of what that plan was. But we did have a motion to approve, and we had a mixed recommendation as the approval is the plan presented. And with that, I so move, and this is for the motion to approve the existing waterfront development.
Second. The park site plan.
The park site plan. Thank you, Michael. Any discussion on that? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries 5-2. Nay, April and Dan. Next, we went into our committee work session on the draft 2016 Bellingham Comprehensive Plan. Okay, so we did make some motions to approve things throughout that plan. We also had a very robust discussion on H-17 and 18. Thank you. How could I forget? On H-18. And so I think, I'm going to check with you, Peter, but is that the only one that we need to make a motion on because none of these others, we don't have to? Do we need to or not? We don't?
Yeah, Rick can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that was in the nature of the other motions for direction.
Okay, just for direction. Okay. Did you have a comment, Councilman Bornham?
Do we have, wasn't there a motion made to direct staff to bring forward the comp plan? I thought that's what you was, we voted on?
We did have a motion to move the, ask the staff to bring forth the issue of minimum densities in the next year.
The whole comp?
Yeah, I think that we need to make a motion to actually bring forward the entire comp plan.
Oh, for November 7.
With an ordinance to enact it.
Okay. Did you want to make that motion?
Yeah, if I got the form right, I move that we direct staff to bring forward the, as amended draft, comprehensive plan in the form of an ordinance for a consideration and possible vote.
Second. Any discussion? Councilman Bornham?
Yeah, I've just got a couple of things to say about this because during the course of this whole comp plan meetings, we've seen and heard many individuals speak with energy and passion about their concerns for their neighborhoods. No chapter of the comp plan sparked more energy and more concerns than the housing chapter. Part of this is because, and almost all the speakers, you may have noted, were from the older working-class neighborhoods. Because they've seen much of their neighborhoods bought up by land speculators and frozen, freezing out first-time buyers in those neighborhoods. I think nothing sparks more passion in people than concerns about family and concerns about their homes. Nothing sparks more passion in me than those two issues. You attack my family? Look out. For most working-class families, the biggest, and many times, the only investment they have in their lives are their homes. That's what they put everything into. That's the only thing we've been able to afford to invest in, is the home. So passion rises with that when people feel their homes, their neighborhoods are under attack. And for many people in the older neighborhoods, that's what, that's what's driving this passion. There, and I just, I'm just bringing this up because I want people to understand what is, has been going on and why. Why I show the passion that I show for these issues, because Jean and I, we've been working on these issues and for an awful long time, and working with many of the people who we've been hearing from for a very long time around these issues, and we are seeing many times where we're losing the battle for our neighborhood. I'm watching systematically down my street where as this friend dies or that friend dies, and those homes are bought immediately at full value from land speculators, homes that I would have been the kind that I could have gotten into at one time, the only way I could have gotten into a house and did get into a house before. And we're concerned. And so I just wanted to bring this up so people understand when they see people speak with passion, what that's about. It's about, you know, a couple of the biggest issues that they face in their lives. And so that's what I've got to say about this and why I was against just putting something in where we haven't had discussion on it and saying, we'll discuss it later. That's not what comp plans are for. Comp plans are for policy, and then this provides the policy, and then, then we go out and have the, and put in the regulations. We haven't done that in some of these. We've put in things we want where the public has not been involved with the discussion. We haven't been involved in the discussion, and that's why I have disagreed. That's my statement.
Anyone else? Any other comments? Okay, so we're gonna take the, we're gonna vote on the motion. All those in favor, accepting the draft comprehensive plan? Please say aye.
Aye.
It's just to develop the ordinance.
We're not accepting, yeah, we're.
The ordinance, yeah, not the entire comprehensive plan. Okay, let's try that again. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Was that, was that anyone out? That was 6-1?
Five to two.
You did two. Okay, so 5-2. Okay, you got that? That's Terry and Jean. All right. Okay, so the next item in front of us was, we had a work session on the 2017-2018 biennial budget. Due to time restraints today, we were only, we only had opportunity to review IT. And I'm actually going to turn this over to Councilmember Murphy, who chaired this portion of the meeting.
I just wanted to mention, we've gotten several forms of community feedback asking us to preserve public access programming, and one of the things that we reviewed as a part of the IT budget since the IT department works so closely and allocates budget for that is, we asked staff to bring us back a resolution for consideration that the community will then see for two years of extending public access programming. And so I just thought that'd be good for people to hear about if they were really concerned about the status of public access programming.
Thank you. So, and that concludes what we had for committee of the whole. Oh, except for minutes in older new business, so I didn't mean that. Executive session, I can report out afterwards. I don't know, that's the way it's listed on the agenda, so I'm just trying to follow my list. We have one set of minutes in front of us. This is for the October 10, 2016 evening regular meeting minutes.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Older new business. Anyone? Okay. We have a report out for our executive session. It was a potential property acquisition. Staff provided information on a potential property acquisition. Discussion on the property acquisition occurred in executive session. No action was taken in executive session. However, in follow-up to what happened in executive session, I move to request city staff and the legal department to develop an option for further dialogue with the Wacom County Council regarding the potential for partnering with Wacom County on the acquisition being considered.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. And that brings us to the mayor's report.
Thank you, Pinky. I have some, actually, three information appointments and two for approval. Mayor's appointment of Arlene Feld to the Mayor's Neighborhood Advisory Commission as Letter Street's primary representative. Mayor's reappointment of Keith Coleman to the Tourism Commission. Mayor's appointment of Maggie Krieger to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and then I have two that need your approval. Mayor's appointment of Amy Chalupka, Chalupka, to the Bellingham Arts Commission.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0.
And then finally, Mayor's reappointment of Lynette Felber and Mary Rossi to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Move approval.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0.
I have a couple other kind of announcements. One was that the city did send another letter back to Chairman Blue of Lemmy Nation about the water negotiations. So we made it clear that part of the negotiation was, or part of the decision was a technical decision that Public Works made, and part of it was a policy discussion to have with the chairman. And I got a phone call from Tim, and he said yes, that we could get together and talk about it, so that's good. I mentioned the capital requests that we had for WACOM, and also, the city is preparing a jail funding example that we asked, that the jail task force asked us to present, so that we're sending, or bringing a presentation that says a different way that we could potentially fund the jail. As you know, my preference is a property tax. And so in the, in the letter that I'm, that we're sending, I said, okay, a sales tax would be acceptable because the only group here that wants to use a property tax is us. So it doesn't seem like it makes a whole lot of sense to keep talking about it if we can't do it, but I do absolutely think that that is the right thing to do. So I just wanted to put myself on the record.
Councilmember Lulikus?
Yeah, Kelly, you and I agree. Capital projects seem to match up nicely with property taxes, but oh, well, that battle's gone. But we've also suggested several different variations on how the jail could be paid for with sales tax. Are you going to be presenting one preferred option to the task force, or maybe one and a half or two?
Well, one of the, one of the issues is how we spend all three tenths of a percent that the county collects. So this particular proposal has to do with using the full three tenths of a percent to both build and operate a jail. So that's, that's what we're presenting to them, which was an original proposal that I made to Jack probably two years ago, and, because I said that if we did do an all-in, we call it the all-in proposal, then the city would assume it was not paying bed rates, that all the money would be put into the facility and the operation. So we'll see what happens. This is just a presentation. It's not a, I mean, just something for them to respond to, because what we have gotten in this group, and Jean was there, and April was there last time, was this idea that we should start, start where we ended off last time and just work around the edges. And I, I said publicly at the meeting, the first meeting, that I didn't think that we would get to an agreement if that was the only thing we had to discuss. So this is kind of a little bit farther away from what was originally proposed, except for the fact that it's not a property tax. So we'll see. We'll see what the response is. They're also going to talk about the, the last proposal that was on the ballot and potentially how these two are different.
Thanks.
You're welcome. And other than that, I, I don't think I'll get into water later.
Can Senator?
Move approval.
Tie goes to the younger person.
What's that? Okay. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. All right, so thank you for joining us. Next council meeting is November 7. Until next time, we are adjourned.